Okay, it's Lee County Board of Supervisors regular meeting October 19, 2022. Meeting is now called to order.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to 2.2-3711. So, eight personnel, six investment in public funds, eight consultation with counsel, and 29 contracts.
Okay, got a motion to go into closed session. You got a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? I want to poll the board and state that the reasons stated were the only topics discussed.
You didn't have one.
Are you polling on that issue?
Yeah, polling the board on the topics that were discussed. All the topics that were discussed.
No. He's polling in closed session, and only Dr. Payne was discussing.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
If.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, now we'll go into departmental reports. And everybody had a chance to look at their reports. Any discussion, questions, discussion on reports? Okay, next we'll move on to constitutional officers. Mr. Chris Jones, Commissioner of Revenue, Personal Property Tax Legislative Changes.
Good evening. I have mostly just got some information to share with you tonight. It's concerning, of course, I don't know if y'all seen these ads on TV and things of that nature talking about, you know, come, we'll buy your vehicle, we'll pay this, you know. I don't know if you've been in the market for a vehicle, but vehicles have appreciated tremendously due to COVID pandemic and some of the supply chain issues, computer shortages, things of that nature. And that's now starting to translate to affecting personal property tax bills. We, I've got some preliminary numbers for you to share tonight, but with the current tax rate of $2.100, what we've had over the last decade that I've been here, I don't know when it was different than that. Historically, we've seen growth in the personal property tax revenues of usually 2%, 3% a year. Right now, it's projected to increase by 36.7% this year based on the numbers that we've got from J.D. Power and the NADA pricing guide valuations that we're required to use by law. The Commissioners Association supported legislation this past session because we can sort of see this coming down the pipe that would allow you to actually sever the personal property tax rate from business property. Historically, the tax rate for business property cannot exceed the personal property rate. So, your personal property rate and business property here have always both been $2.100. The legislation would allow the board to adopt a different tax rate for that class of property if they so wish. And I've made some packets of information here because it result in a little over a million dollar windfall if the tax rate is not adjusted. There's also a few other methods that I was able to find in the code with the concurrence of the local board, we could adopt an assessment ratio. And I've put all this in here, kind of the pros and cons of each, each one. My personal feeling is I just, I don't think this, you know, pandemic-related, I guess, increase in vehicles, that shouldn't justify, I guess, I guess, getting a million dollar windfall in this current economic climate. You know, I think it would be a poor time to, you know, leave that rate alone. I think something should be done. So, whether it's, you know, through the rate adjustment, an assessment ratio, I've listed about four different ways that maybe it could be done to help ease that burden on people. And I'll give this to you, then I can come back next month. And if y'all have any questions when we read through it, feel free to reach out to me anytime. You know, our door's always open, but, you know, some folks, you know, they, I think they're going to get hit pretty hard with that if something is not done. I understand the county needs more money, just like everybody could use more money right now because the price of everything's going up with gas, you know, just everything in general. But I don't know if, I guess, the general public sort of being a victim of circumstance with the tax structure in Virginia on the personal property tax, I'm just not sure that that's a good way to go about conducting business and what's in the best interest of the citizens of the county. So, please read through the different proposals that I've kind of laid out that we could maybe use to adjust. Some of those are either reducing the rate by 25%, which would be a dollar and a half. It would still indicate a 2.5% revenue increase, but that's a far cry better than the 36.7%. For every penny that the rate is adjusted, it equates to around, right at $20,000 in tax revenue. So, you know, that's something to keep in mind. I'll go on to explain that the assessment ratio would help, it would help, I guess, keep from diluting the personal property tax relief monies that are sent from the state because that's tied to the assessment on the first 20,000 value. So, as these values go up, it dilutes the personal property tax relief that's sent from the state on qualifying vehicles. So, you know, that's something that the ratio may be something to look at. But like I said, there's four different ways that I've kind of explained, you know, maybe we can look at doing something. But if you have any questions concerning that, you know, I'll be happy to answer now or you can contact me at any time.
Mr. Jones, did you include in your information what the sunset provision on this code change is?
Yeah, essentially, the sunset that's in the legislation, it goes to December 31 of '24, the way it is currently written. So, with the legislation, if you proceed and use it, you know, you can use it for the next couple of years. But then if nothing is changed with the legislation, if they don't extend the sunset or if they just make this permanent, if that does not happen from the General Assembly, then January 1 of 2025, we would have to revert back to the business personal property and the personal property rate would have to be the same or personal property can exceed it. The business personal property rate cannot exceed the personal property rate, if that makes sense. It ends December 31 of '24 if you use the legislation. The legislation, I guess, you know, speaking a little bit, I guess, in favor of that, you know, there really wouldn't be anything to do with the assessment methodology that would have to be changed. All of it would just be changing the rate. The downside to that is by using the higher values, it is going to need a bigger piece of the personal property tax relief pie because that's a fixed number that comes from the state every year, that amount of money. So, by changing the ratio, the assessment ratio, if you went with a 75% ratio, you would actually get a little more mileage out of your PPTR funds. But like I said, there'd be a little more work in doing that. But I think I'll, I've tried to explain it all, spent most of the day today typing the document up, so there may be a few grammatical errors, I'll look over that. But the gist of it, I think, I think you should be able to figure out. And have any other questions we have to answer?
I'll read that, then I'll talk to you.
Okay, yeah, yeah, feel free to call or come by any, anytime because I think it is something that, it's going to affect people, you know, that they may not be budgeting for that. And, you know, I just, I think it's something that people may not see coming and, I don't know, I feel like with everything going on, with just inflation running away, gas and food, I mean, my wife went to the grocery store the other day, used to be $200, every time she went, it's $400. And that's double. All they say that inflation's 8.5%. I don't know, my calculator can't get there any higher than that. But, but anyway, I just think that that's something to take into consideration.
And we probably will want you to come back next month.
Okay, all right.
We'll get into the big discussion, will?
Okay, sounds good.
If you can make it.
Yeah, I'll try my best.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you all.
Okay, next, everybody has a chance to look at the Treasury report. Any discussion or questions on the Treasury report? Okay, here in none, well, move to public expression. And if there's anybody here for public expression, I'll ask you to come up, state your name, address, and three-minute time limit.
Mr. Chairman, for clarity, anyone wanting to speak on the application by Hopkins, medical association, there's not going to be a separate public expression time for that, correct?
No.
So, if anybody wants to speak to it, then they can speak to it now.
Yeah, that's, that's the only public question we got on here.
Good evening. My name's Matthew Scott. I'm 40 years old. 23 of those years were spent hopelessly addicted to various drugs, one of which was a drug called Suboxone. Well, I was in high school in the 90s, I was introduced to a prescription drug called Oxycontin. I quickly became physically addicted to this powerful painkiller. When I was 21, I entered inpatient treatment for the first time. Only stayed clean for a short while before returning to active addiction. My family was so worried at the time, constantly looking for ways to help me get off painkillers and get back on track. The problem was I couldn't stand the thought of the hellish withdrawal symptoms I would have to endure if I were to stop. In 2003, we began to hear about a new treatment for opioid dependence called Suboxone. We went and spoke to the doctor who was prescribing it, asked questions, and were convinced that this was a godsend, that this was the answer to my family's prayers. We were told flat out that this drug would keep me from experiencing withdrawal symptoms. And when I came, when, when I came off a bit, there'd be little to no withdrawal symptoms from the Suboxone itself leaving my system. I had to be in withdrawal the day I started this medication, so I was filling her up when I arrived to take the first dose. I was giving my first pill in the doctor's office under the supervision of the doctor. About 20 minutes in, you know, I'm on my way out of withdrawal, bouncing, feeling great, couldn't believe it. This is a miracle pill indeed. I thought the years of misery and addiction were soon to be over. I couldn't have been more wrong. For the next several months, I began working and attending 12-step meetings, and all the while, I felt wonderful. I wasn't sick from not having oxys, had plenty of energy provided by the medication. I wasn't having to steal or sell drugs to obtain it. From all outward appearances, I was in recovery and doing well. As I began to approach one year on Suboxone, my doctor and I decided it's time for me to come off it as well. I was excited to be free for the first time since I was 15 years old. My addiction had cost me a lot already at that point in my life. I dropped out of high school, damaged family relationships. It began lowering my dose every couple of weeks. I was doing fine until we reached about four milligrams. All of a sudden, I began to feel a familiar feeling. I was getting dose sick. That same horrendous sickness I'd experienced with Oxycontin, I began to voice my concerns to my doctor and my counselor. I was told that I was exaggerating and that Suboxone wouldn't produce withdrawal symptoms like the other opioids. He continued to lower my dose, two milligrams, then two every other day, then nothing. Just as America had been lied to about the dangers of Oxycontin, I had been lied to about the true nature of Suboxone. Suboxone contains a very powerful drug called buprenorphine that has a high risk for addiction and causes very long extended withdrawal symptoms when discontinued. When I lost my source of Suboxone, I was immediately back at the drug dealer's house buying pills to stop that sickness that literally makes you feel like you're dying. I soon found another doctor, then another. I'd be on Suboxone for another 15 years of my life. I saw many shady doctors, some of whom were shut down at times and investigated by the DEA. Some took on cash payments, four or 500 bucks a month. Many wrote other prescription drugs, including Xanax and Klonopin, both powerful benzodiazepines that can result in death when taken with opioids. I sold and traded my Suboxone the entire time I was on it to obtain other narcotics. The answer for the opioid epidemic is not more opioids. This drug is not a harmless drug. Many of the younger people who are on Suboxone now have never been on Oxycontin. They started using Suboxone on the street and got hooked on it. Suboxone also fuels the drug economy in this county, an economy that includes other drugs like methamphetamine. I'm not making that connection out of thin air. I lived this life for many, many years. Many addicts that receive Suboxone divert to prescription for cash or trade for other substances. The reason is Suboxone only deals with one very small aspect of addiction, physical dependency to opioids. It does nothing to treat addictions to other drugs or for the much larger problem, which is a problem of the heart. The answer for addiction is not a pill, it's a person. It's not a program, it's a person. That person is the Lord Jesus Christ. Jesus said, "I am the way, the truth, and the life. No man come unto the Father but by me." He is the way to eternal life, but he's also the way out of the pit of drug addiction. He offers true freedom you can't find in a pill or a powder. John 8:36 says, "If the sun therefore shall make you free, shall be free indeed." I know that many people involved in medication-assisted treatment, well-intentioned, but it isn't working. We can't keep looking to the pharmaceutical companies to solve the problems their lives and unethical practices created to begin with. Addiction is not diabetes, and Suboxone is certainly not insulin. Suboxone, while once thought to be a miracle drug, has now caused an epidemic of its own. Thank you for hearing me.
Very good.
Just to clarify, will representatives of HMA be able to speak during the time of which the permit will be up for discussion, or should we also speak during the moment of public expression?
Yeah, you'll be welcome to speak.
Okay. So, you want everybody to speak during the public expression portion of the agenda, not during?
Yeah, I have to get as much of that out.
Okay, we'll wait till the end.
Think that way, everybody's on the same page.
Okay.
I just heard about this today, so I didn't have anything planned, but I just know.
State your name.
My name is Hazel Spurlock. And, like I said, I just heard about this today. If you have something positive to say about this or something negative to say about this. And so, I'm here to just say what I know, and I'm 100% behind him, what he just said, because I've dealt with it personally in my life with my family. And I also do a jail ministry in Claiborne County, and I can tell you that the people that's in there that have been addicted to Suboxone, it doesn't, if it's administered in a medical facility, that could be great, or a treatment center where it's handed to the patient. But to put it on the street is not, has not helped anybody that I know. They just fall further into addiction. They tell me that it is the hardest thing that they've ever tried to get off of. So, I just wanted to make my opinion known because I know that to be the truth because I personally, my daughter was addicted to opiates, and she, I heard about this, Suboxone, and I was like, you know, like he said, it's a godsend, but I found out real quick. When somebody stays on it year after year, and the doctors are getting it year after year after year, then it's not something that brings people on the street off that drug.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what our friends here have to say before I speak because that'd be nice to conclude or to rebut, and I'm sure our positions are going to be pointed out in the flaws.
For clarification, if anyone in here, state your name.
My name is Jack Raisai. I think people are well-intentioned. I just think Suboxone arrangement throughout this nation is headed in the wrong direction. It's been headed in the wrong direction for 20 years. There's so much evidence that what these two people have to say, it's, it's repeated 10,000 times 10,000 here. People are being harmed severely because of the Suboxone that comes on the streets, on the streets, not just this little hamlet here, but New York, Boston, everywhere. And it's causing a whole lot of confusion. It's like, it's like trying to put out a fire and stacking on the fire and thinking you're doing something well, but it just keeps on spreading because it's a windy day. It's not putting out the fire, it's causing further flames and further destruction within the lives and hearts of families and, and people. And it's a very sad situation. For example, obviously, the pharmaceutical companies and the doctors are linked together. This is a moneymaker, a moneymaker, and everybody's been reported, everyone understands what this is all about. Well-intentioned people finding a source of income, making a career out of this. About six years ago, I'm in Vermont, large, large conference, the largest conference in, in that state, social workers, medical people, they all come together for, for a day of discourse. Doctors, the keynote speaker, he stands up, and to my surprise, he begins for the next 45 minutes or so to lay out why the opiate epidemic had occurred in the state of Vermont. He said because of Oxycontin, Xanax being, being distributed through legal means into the populace, that that was the beginning of the opiate problem here in our state. The governor, two years before that time, he, he used his entire state of the state address to communicate about the, the opiate problem, the epidemic, which came to Vermont around 2015, 2014, and it became very serious. All the papers had it on their front page. Basically, basically what he was saying is that people were coming to the doctors and they wanted pain-free experiences. So, the doctors had Oxycontin and other pills that they could dispense, and that's exactly what they began to do. And more people came because everybody's got a pain or two. And the pharmaceuticals were behind it, the people were being told that there wouldn't be any withdrawals, you'd be fine, it's not addictive, that type of thing. Well, obviously, people became addicted. Now, when he began to have to pull back because the federal government and the state government started to come in and ask the doctors, well, how much, how, how much are you actually prescribing to, to these people? And they realized, whoa, it's overwhelming. And so, some doctors were, were sued, and there became some serious ramifications there in the state of Vermont. So, what happens? These people who are now hooked, they're now addicted to legal drugs, once the doctors began to, to pull away, these people had to find another source. And guess who started coming up into the state of Vermont, which before was, was a, there wasn't much in the way of drug addiction or major problems there. Drug pushers from, from New York City, from Boston started to come in because now there was a, there was a vacuum. The doctors couldn't prescribe as much as they had. And so, these people came in and they filled that vacuum. And that doctor stood up that day, and basically, that's, that's what he stated. And this has been going on, not just in Vermont, but all over, all over our nation. And, and I'm sure, you, you dear people, I don't know where you stand at, but I'm sure these people from the Hamilton Group will be here because you don't want a lawsuit. You don't, you don't want your county, Lee, Lee County, to have to deal with all that nonsense. And, and so, it's going to happen whether you want it or not, or even whether the people in this county want, want that clinic over there on Route 58 or not, it's going to happen. But it's a, it's a tragedy. I sat there with a man, he, he hung himself last week. He, he was told that this was a miracle drug many, many years ago, and so, he began to use it, and again, he abused it, just like probably 80 to 90% of the people who, who get their, their legal supply. He felt that he needed it. He felt that he, he needed to have a maintenance-type drug. And so, so that's what he did. He, that, when he played around it, and last week, he, he took his own life, very sad. Part of that, I'm not saying all of it, a part of that was because he could get his Suboxone, and he could mix it, he could sell, sell it here, and he could get some crystal meth, and he could use and abuse, and it was cash in his pocket. It was gold in that man's pocket, and he knew what he had, and so, he used it to, to do what he had done. He was 40-some years old, to do what he had done for many, many years. And he's not the, Matt's not the exception to the rule. This other man wasn't the exception to the rule. They are the rule. This is what's going down right here in this county, and you know it. And all, anybody that's in the court system, judicial system, medical system, social system, behavioral system here in this county, you know exactly what's happening. And you know, these people aren't going to be able to clear it up because they're going to be dispensing it, and there's going to be a greater flow. And to think that a person who's already having emotional and mental havoc is going to make the right decisions with his, with his pieces of gold, please, we know better than that. We're supposed to be grownups. We're supposed to understand these things. And that's what's going to happen. It'd just be, be a greater, greater tragedy.
Okay, I don't mean to interrupt, you're running well over your time.
You got it.
Thank you, sir.
If I might make a statement.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I've heard the opposition here against the Hamilton Group. I've not heard any suggestions about what's the fix. If Suboxone's not it, what is?
The Lord Jesus Christ. Woo! Boy, boy, what's the? I mean, it's pretty obvious. It broke down when humankind decided to do their own thing. And what did they do? They became insecure, they covered up, they felt threatened. And so, they covered up. And so, now what we're doing, we're using Suboxone to cover up our insecurities, our fears, our apprehensions, our dysfunctional families.
Let's get back to order here. Next, all.
Got it.
Anybody else want to step up?
Just a brief comment. I'm Dan Spurlock, and I am the director of the Stand Gap Coalition, which is now headquartered down in Claiborne County. But we've been a tri-state drug awareness and prevention coalition now 12 years, and we've had lots of interaction up here in Lee County. All I want to mention is, is another avenue to look on this. This past week, I trained over 1,200 kids in schools about choices, and we focus on items that are in front of them. All our kids right now, this vaping issue is the, is the most incredible assault, commercial assault on our children I've seen in my adult life. The issues of the drugs and the one pill, you know, the DEA has a motto now, "One pill kills" because of the pill mills making these pills. One pill that you think is a Xanax that's laced with fentanyl, and you're dead. Okay? So, my, the comment I have to make is, there's another avenue on this, and one- And one of the things that we teach the kids when we train is, you don't clear yourself of a nicotine addiction by doing nicotine. That's not the way it works. You don't clear yourself of a drug addiction by doing more drugs. It doesn't work that way. We don't see it, we've been doing this 12 years. We're a volunteer organization that work with all kinds of people. But my concern is this. There's children out here who live in homes that are in an addiction process home, that they may or may not realize that's what it is. And the parents come to that home that are working off of a Suboxone profile, that is supposed to go one year. But I've dealt with many people, it's gone eight years, and they're still dealing with the program. That child is getting taught, if you will, on how to deal with continued drug awareness in the home. It's not taking their parent away from the drug, but it's probably taking the parent further away from the child. So, sir, you asked a question, well, what can we do? What is the fix? The fix, to me, is, and our mantra at Stand and Grant Coalition is, "Communication plus education equals performance." We've got to get out here and communicate with the whole community and say, "This is a situation that you've got to make a decision on. Do you want this?" And your community realizing that it is not an end-all fix of a situation. I thank you for your time.
We'd like to end it so we can address all the comments, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Anybody else? I feel like you're next.
Good afternoon, it's evening now, and happy belated Easter. My name is Joe Bunn, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Steph Cohen Johnson, and I represent the Hopkins Medical Association LLC. In 2018, this county filed suit against Purdue Pharma and various other affiliates, and asserted that it suffered a public nuisance. In paragraph 10 of the complaint, it says, "Lee County is now having to allocate substantial taxpayer dollars, resources, staff, energy, and time to address the damage that opioid scourge has left in its wake and to address its many casualties. County's costs for incarceration and correction services have increased in recent years due to an increasing crime rate attributable to the opioid epidemic. The cost of the county's warrant for foster care and other child placement services has similarly increased due to the increasing number of children who need such services because opioid addiction has destroyed the structure of their families. Fire and emergency medical services are overutilized because of an increased number of opioid-related overdoses. The burden on law enforcement is substantially increased by opioid-related crimes related to prescription opioid theft, diversion, and sales on the black market. Courts, social workers, nurses, schools, intervention programs, and clinics have all been harmed. Nearly every aspect of Lee County's budget has been significantly and negatively impacted by this defendant-made epidemic." And in closing, this county asked the court to compel the defendants to abate and remove the public nuisance they have caused by immediately ceasing the unlawful conduct described throughout Fast forward to March 2nd of 2022, and the House Ways and Means Committee convened a meeting, and they had a number of experts in the field that appeared in front of them. In particular, one of them, Regina LaBelle, from the Addiction and Public Policy Initiative at the O'Neill Institute for National and Global Health Law at Georgetown University Law Center. During her testimony, Ms. LaBelle noted that multiple studies and evaluations have shown that buprenorphine is a safe and relatively weak opioid with a high, very high affinity for the opioid immune receptor site, and the least likely opioid to be diverted for abuse, and almost always, when done so, only to reduce withdrawal symptoms. Another expert in the field, Ms. Jessica Holsey, testified that individuals treated with buprenorphine and methadone after a non-fatal opioid overdose had a 40% reduction in mortality. The MATS program, Medications for Addiction Treatment, decreases opioid use, overdose deaths, criminal activity, and infectious disease transmission. She went on to state that studies have found that individuals with a SUD or opioid abuse disorder, returning from incarceration to the community, are 120 times, 129 times more likely to die of a drug overdose during the first two weeks of reentry. But providing medications for addiction treatment prior to release and continuation during reentry cuts the risk of death up to 75%. Which brings us to Suboxone. Suboxone is oftentimes confused with Subutex. Subutex is pure buprenorphine. Suboxone is buprenorphine and naloxone. It's a cocktail, and it works a lot like a plug-in in your home, or even here. The naloxone is your ground. It reduces cravings. Indeed, if you were to take an opioid above the level of buprenorphine, you would suffer a massive migraine headache, and it would become unbearable. The buprenorphine provides just enough opioid to reduce your cravings and your withdrawal symptoms, such as aches, among other things. And that's what HMA provides to 99% of their patients. The only patients that receive Subutex are pregnant women who, states have shown, cannot tolerate naloxone, or individuals that have provided a level indicating, a letter from a medical doctor indicating that they have a medical risk of allergy to naloxone. Mr. Scott noted earlier that addiction is not diabetes. And under the law, the Americans with Disabilities Act states otherwise. An individual that suffers from addiction is entitled to the same protections as a person who is a diabetic. They must receive a reasonable accommodation for that illness. And HMA, like other Suboxone providers, you cannot divorce the dispensing of a product from the individuals who are receiving that treatment. There's numerous case law on that very point, in particular by the Third Circuit of the United States. And given that, we believe that even subjecting HMA to seeking a special use permit, when other medical facilities are not subjected to that, is a violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Moreover, this board had proposed the idea during our last time together that a cap should apply to the total number of patients at the facility. We believe that this board's jurisdiction on that particular matter has been preempted. The DEA limits the number of patients that each provider can serve, and currently the maximum of that is 275. Even if this board disagrees that preemption does not apply, the natural dimension, the physical dimensions of the facility and the method by which HMA receives payment for the majority of its services through Medicaid dictate natural limitations on the number of patients that they can see at that site. The board also noted earlier that there could be potential for a public safety risk at the site, because a number of the folks that would seek this form of treatment travel by foot. This same site used to be a grocery store, where I would imagine a large number of people also travel by foot. Yet this board did not deny them a permit to conduct their business. I empathize with Mr. Spurlock, Ms. Spurlock, Mr. Scott, Mr. Raisad. I'm a believer myself. And given what this county has gone through, given what the county where I was born, McCannan County, has gone through, and the friends I've lost, and the family members I have seen suffer, something, you have to try something. Or nothing will happen. In fact, it'll get worse. With that being said, I implore each of you to vote in favor of the special use permit of Hopkins Medical Association. Thank you very much.
Does anybody have any questions? For Mr. Bunn? No question. Okay. Thank you very much. Does anybody else want to speak? Not just on that behalf, but public expression in general. Anybody else got anything before we move on? Okay, here none, we'll move on to approval of minutes. March 15th, 2022, regular meeting.
I'm going to do a brief next, Chairman.
Second. I'm second. Got a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we have approval of refunds. Has anybody looked at that one?
I make a motion to approve the refund request for Dan's review. Sound of $121.64.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got payroll, county administrator reports, payroll warrants have been issued, and approval of disbursements.
Motion.
I'll second that.
Got a motion to pay in a second, all those in favor? Okay, next we got Project Reconnect. Tiffany Gough with Southwest Virginia Workforce Development.
Good evening. I am Tiffany Gough, I'm the Director of Programs for the Workforce Development Board. March 3rd, I held a roundtable in Lebanon regarding an upcoming event by the Department of Corrections, which is a release of an exodus, as they are calling it, of inmates due to the increase in earned sentence credits. This will result, per the Department of Corrections, that at least 4,500 inmates be released between July 1st and August 30th of this year. We, the law changed, and they did go back, they changed from 4.5 days for every 30 days served, to where an inmate would get 15 days for every 30 days served on their good time, and they made that retroactive to the beginning of that inmate's sentence, which has resulted in at least 4,500 individuals who are now eligible for release. We have been working alongside DOC to determine, if we can, how many of those individuals will be returning to the eight jurisdictions that the Workforce Development Board serves. This will be four times the amount of individuals that they normally have. And those will continue, they've said August will be the cutoff, but they have now said that those will probably continue through September and October, until they can get everyone that qualified released. So, they still do not have, we've talked to wardens and different folks, they still have no idea, they've not identified who all of those individuals are. But, as such, it has created an opportunity and a challenge for our rural areas. Some things that folks, when they have released, they come out, they have a home plan. Ideally, that's a good, sound home plan. But I'll tell you, during the meeting that we held on March 3rd to kind of get through this, and this is part of the reason that Mr. Mosley, Mr. Pove asked me to come back, is that I was dealing behind the scenes with a gentleman whose home plan had lasted two weeks. He had been on a park bench for three days, he had no clothes, no food, no transportation, no driver's license, no birth certificate, no anything, no ID. My staff had to help this man get to Norton Homeless Shelter, secure documents to get an ID, get a job, but he had no provisions, no support, no mental health, no anything. And those are the problems that we are dealing with times 1,000. When we get these folks back, it doesn't matter what home plan, this man was allowed to home plan to an ex-wife, who had no intention of giving him a place to stay for very long, if she wants to be honest about that. It lasted two weeks, it's as long as they can stand each other, I suppose, and he was homeless on a park bench. This is a workforce problem, because my team are the group that are challenged with working with these individuals to try and secure some sort of employment for these individuals when they come home. It could be possibly a workforce windfall, because right now, we have a drastic shortage of workers. I explained at the roundtable that I had pulled numbers at one point a few months ago, and we had 1,000 jobs available, at least 1,000 openings, and there were 472 individuals signed up on unemployment to fill those jobs. We, if we were able to get these folks back and be able to work and provide enough resources, this could be a windfall for our employers and help them fill and backfill jobs that have been available for the last two years. So, in that element, we have decided, we've come together, my team at the Workforce Development Board to create a plan. This is a fluid plan, because I don't know yet how many people we will actually get. I am anticipating that of that 4,500, we will get at least a third. Which, in small areas, if you've got 500, 700, 1,000 individuals, I don't know what we, as a local community, would be able to do with that many people. And so, part of the plan that we have come up with, and like I said, this is sort of changing every day, as soon as I know what that number is, there'll be a revision of this, I'm sure, because I'll have to put some real game point plans together of how we're going to work with folks. But it was suggested that there be an entry point, and I think it indicates that you guys have this, and if you don't, I'm happy to extend it to you. But a singular entry point, we are going to set up, the Workforce Development Board will set up that entry point for individuals who are released, we will be where they can call to find out what their next step is, where they should report, what offices available to them, what services they may need. And then, we will connect them with one of our staff members, our case management staff, who will go through more of a thorough assessment to determine what other agencies, what other community grassroots resources are available to them. We expect that a large number of those individuals will be returning from drug-related crimes, who may also have addiction issues that they are still dealing with. So, we're hoping that some of those So we're hoping that some of those grassroots will be recovery. Um, you guys know, we already have a ROBS program, which is a recovery grant program. Um, that program is ending in September. Um, so I'm diligently seeking funding sources to continue that good work. We've helped a hundred and twenty people get their lives back, pieced back together. Um, so we are working on that, but we will have a call number where they will be able to call that number and get some resources. We'll enter into, um, some integrated service team work with our case management staff to pull in those other resources of people who are interested in helping these folks, um, come back into society. We're going to work with our businesses, which have been, and continues to be the biggest struggle for people who are in reentry. Businesses have stigma about hiring people who have backgrounds. We have been fighting this fight forever, um, and we are to a place in this area where they no longer have a choice. It's this or close your doors. Like, we're getting to that place. Um, I, there are no more people to pull, um, there aren't people trapped in the basement somewhere that I could do, and 3D printing doesn't work. So these are the people that are available. This is our available workforce, and we need your encouragement and everyone else's encouragement to employers to please consider at least just one. Hire one person. There are lots of statistics to prove that people who have backgrounds can be more loyal and more responsible employees than people you just hire off the street. Hiring people is always a gamble, and you just never know who you're going to get. So, um, that's one part of that. Additional resources, we are pursuing, uh, we did ask for congressionally-directed funding, um, to kind of combat this. I have sent them this packet, I've sent them letters and, and their whole application to, um, try to get some of those funds for our area. We plan also to ask for national opioid settlement monies to help, um, with some of these individuals. Um, and our intensive case manager services, we're just going to be taking what we normally do and really stepping it up in the intense because these folks that are coming out, uh, a lot of them have so many comorbid, um, mental health issues that have not been treated. Um, they may not even know they have. In our ROBS program, we have done psychological evaluations on every single one of those individuals who learned a great deal about why they have done some of the things they did because they didn't know and had never been treated for mental health issues. Um, they just thought, I've got a short temper, I'm impulsive. Those kind of decisions and those kind of things are underlying a lot of times to mental health issues, and they've not been addressed. Um, so soft skills preparation, we'll be working, like I said, more one-on-one with these individuals. Um, and, um, as we go through this, as we get closer to July, we're doing a job fair, the DOC is going to have a big job fair in Lebanon. They are going to transport folks as they start coming out, they're going to transport those folks back. Um, we are partnering with the Appalachian Council for Innovation. They will have a meeting in Big Stone on May the fourth that is for employers to come and find out what things that, uh, the council wants to do to help incentivize them to hire, um, people who are justice-involved. Um, so that, um, will be at the Goodlow Center. It's a free event, they're going to serve breakfast. Um, so come and listen to, um, what their plan is, and they are going to create a website where a justice-involved individual will be connected directly to that site, and they will know from the get-go what businesses actually hire felons and, um, under what circumstances, so that they're not wasting their time beating the door down at some, um, business that is not, that's not, you know, able to for whatever reason or just doesn't want to. But that is a great project and, um, that's going to be covering also over into the Abaddon, into our workforce area too, all of those businesses, so there will be many. So we're hoping for a good turnout in Big Stone. But I didn't want to take up too much time, but if you've got the plan, if you have questions, help you want to lend, I'm all ears, but if you have questions right now, I'd take those.
What, on May the fourth, what time is where?
I'll send it to you. I'll send you the link.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'll send you the link.
I'll, I'll send it to.
The program, who, who it's being sponsored by.
Mm-hmm.
Give me all the information you can on it.
I will do that, sir.
Tiffany, if you get any information about how many inmates are going to be released back in their area, I'd appreciate if you could.
Trust me, I am sitting with bated breath, please, see how many that number is going to be. The last number I heard, it was a minimum of seven hundred. Um, and so that's, that's a lot.
In what, what area? You said Lee Scott was?
Yes, we cover from, we cover from Bluefield to Lee County. So in those seven counties in the city of Norton, we will have seven hundred people, which doesn't sound like a lot, but in small towns, it's a lot. Especially if these people, if their home plans don't pan out, um, and there's no housing and there's no transitional housing, um, I don't know where people are going to go. The only homeless shelter we have is at Norton, so. And they don't take people with violent backgrounds, so. And these won't be just men, these are women as well.
Okay. And you're thinking that's approximately a total of seven hundred?
That's the minimum, will be seven hundred. Um, we are expecting a third of that number. I'm, I'm thinking it'll be more like eleven or twelve hundred if I guess, but they said they're going to send in a press release, the DOC said they will, um, release additional resources. We expect that those resources will be in form of people, um, not cash. So I'm hoping that it'll be money.
Yeah.
I need, I need money, um, to do those things, to provide services and to help people get established, but, um, I'll take staff too, if that works. But I will send that link to everybody, uh, make sure you have it, and I would love to see all of you and any businesses that you can bring to that a minute on May the fourth, that would be wonderful. And I'm sure John Beber, who used to work for the Congressman, um, would appreciate your support in that too. He's leading up this project. Any more questions?
Any more questions?
Thanks for what you do, it's needed.
Yeah, thanks, Chair, you get back.
I absolutely will, I promise.
You'll be back with me, okay?
You're on, first on my list tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the list is, uh, the airport's ground lease, Greg Estes, Estes Brother.
Greg was unable to make it today. My name is Austin Glass, I'm for Estes Brother, I'll be taking his place. I'm here primarily to just answer questions that you may have. We, we put together a, a, a ground lease, a proposed hangar for the county airport for our, for our airplane. Like I said, we just want to, we want to try to get this worked out as soon as possible, get that thing parked down here. We've been keeping it at Harlan County. Uh, I'd just like to answer any questions you guys may have on this, on this ground lease we've proposed.
I think we came up with, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, but I think, uh, our attorney and Dane.
And somebody from your own association.
Somebody, uh, get together and, and just get all the correct words.
We've got about five or six, probably minor issues, some of it's just language. Uh, I don't think it'll be major sticking points on anything, and, uh, we'd like to just sit down. I told you, you know, I had, had a chance, I actually didn't sit down and get to read the document completely through and reference back and things until last night. So, uh, it's too late to get through something today, but, uh, we, just a few issues. Uh, some of it's just a question mark inside, it's really what's the intent of this, and some of it seems to be a reference to something that's not there in another provision. So I don't think it'll take too long to clear it up. Uh, I think we're going to have a recess meeting on May third, so I think we, if we get the document knocked out by that time, it can be approved at that point.
Can I just call you tomorrow and we'll kind of set up a time to get together? I can, somebody can come to your office or wherever we need to.
That'll be fine, and I'll, I'll email you the sections. I think I can probably, you just copy most of what I sent to the county attorney today, and you'll, you'll be able to see what sections we're talking about and, and the issues at hand. So I don't think it'll take too much work to get it worked out.
Thanks.
There it goes.
Tiffany, go.
Yeah, we're just, we, uh, we're just wanting to get this done, and like I said, we're keeping Harlan County's provision.
We will, too.
Thanks.
You're not alone.
He had to fly in today, so I'm just glad he's in a good mood.
Mr. Chairman, before we start, I appreciate Mr. Bunn, he shifted all the way back. I think we're probably violating a little meeting exactly, we've got people out.
No, we need, we need him over.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I'll, I'll ask them to move down, I'll, uh, sorry to go after you, but I didn't realize this was over.
I think, and the reason he probably got that on his behalf was probably there was so much background.
Yeah, yeah, I know, that's why he did it, uh.
Okay, next we got whole business, the special use permit, Hopkins Medical Association, LLC.
Well, Chairman, we all, we kind of had an opportunity to speak to that, and say what our position is.
Right ahead.
So I guess most people here know that what I do most of the time is practice law. And I've been a lot of criminal defense over the years, uh, gives me some perspective on Suboxone. I don't know if it's a good perspective or a bad perspective, it's probably somewhat of a skewed perspective. But, you know, I probably agree with about what everybody said here tonight, and I agree with a lot of what Hopkins said, Mr. Bunn said. Yeah, I don't advise my clients, my criminal clients, to get on Suboxone. Uh, I think there's probably more harm that I see from it than good, but I'm not in a position to see the good things that can come from it. And I think I referenced last time that I've got a friend that's on it that's a professional that functions well in part because of it. But I think that, that we all probably see, not the success stories, we have no reason to know about the success stories, but for the people who deals about some of those kinds of things, that's what we, what we see. I don't agree that we're preempted by federal law, and I think, uh, you know, lawyers usually lead with their strongest points and end with their weakest points. I noticed that the preemption issue is kind of at the end of the speech, which kind of tells me what I thought, that, that is probably not, not accurate on that. But, you know, I think Mr. Bunn said something that was accurate, that we've got to try something. And I think I mentioned probably a year ago that we had gone several months and not talked about the drug issue, and no doubt we've got a big drug issue, and, and as a board, in all candor, we're probably not tackling that drug issue enough. And, you know, like the lady said, from Workforce Development, it's one of the biggest impediments we have in our local economy is the labor pool, and the labor pool is diminished greatly by dependency on opioids and other kinds of drugs. So I think we do need to, to really step it up and try to do something more about the drug issue in the county. And I appreciate what Recovery Through Crisis has done to try to help with that. A lot of the complaints about, um, you know, not liking Suboxone or it's not effective, people do this or that, a lot of that's federal, federal issue. So I think a lot of the things that have been said are probably accurate, but they probably need to be taken up with Congressmen and Senators and probably not Board Supervisors, because we don't have the authority to get rid of a, of a drug in our county. When, when we all got sworn in as supervisors, we took a notice to uphold the Virginia Constitution and the federal constitution. And individuals and businesses are protected by due process clause of both of those constitutions, Virginia and federal. And businesses and corporations enjoy those same due process protections. This application was filed under the zoning laws as they exist today. And so because that's what existed at the time that it was filed, and because I think that what Mr. Bunn has stated and other legal minds in the room have stated, uh, we probably don't have a lot of choice, even though as a practical matter, we may not think that Suboxone works or that it may do more harm than good. This is allowed by special use permit, and I think that we can make our decision based on the hours of operation, uh, different things involving time, place, manner that the business is conducting. But outside of putting some time restriction on it or something involving traffic control or, you know, the lighting's too bright, something like that, outside of those things, which aren't the things that anybody's complaining about, under our laws, it's allowed in the county in certain zones, and this is one of those zones. So, you know, I think if we didn't want this kind of thing, probably what should have happened a long time ago is we probably should have just outlawed it frankly. But we did, and so we've got this application now, and so I don't, I don't really think that we had much choice. It's not that, it's not that I wanted to do it, but, you know, I think we have to do it, um, and I swore to uphold the constitution, whether it's in my favor or it's not, and so, you know, my opinion is that we don't have any choice but to approve.
Well, you know, I only have one, one comment, and, and it's the fact that, you know, I'm, I'm committed to the people that put me in office here, and, uh, that's how I made my decision, based on the people that put me in here, what they asked me or tell me they don't want or, or do want, but they approve of or don't approve of. And that's how I based my decision.
Basically, Mr. Chairman, uh, I know people that went from the OxyContin to this, and it hasn't helped, and I've heard the good stories, but I kind of like you. The people put me up here, no, they're not up here tonight, but they talk to me, they call me if they don't want it. Uh, I wouldn't be here without them, you know. So I'm going to make a decision on the people, is what I believe in, and however the chips fall, they just fall. But I know how they put me up here, I know what they want, and if I don't do what they want me to do, because I'm working for them, they ain't going to send me back up here. Simple as that. That's how it is. I go out next year in November, or September, and start knocking on the doors, this will be brought up. This will be brought up. Will you vote for that? You know, we didn't want. That's what I based my opinion on, the people.
I've known a Scott boy many years, and I have seen what he was at one time and what he turned into because of the drugs, and then what he has, how he has changed because of his, his, uh, change in his staying with the Lord and where he is now. And, uh, I just, I have to be where my vote is, same as where, uh, his vote is.
Mr. Chairman, can I say one more time? Yeah, no disrespect to you, Mr. Smith, but we operate under a represented democracy, not a pure democracy. In a pure democracy, you follow a hundred percent of what people want because there, there is no representation. The people vote on every matter at issue. A long time ago, Ross Perot basically, uh, had the idea to go back. A long time ago, Ross Perot basically had the idea to go back to that through technology. Just everybody would have something on their, on their TV set, and when an issue came up, you just voted on it. But that's not what we have. We have a representative democracy. People elect us to study the issues, to talk to legal counsel, especially about things that deal with legal issues, and to put all that together and make a decision. And so I, I can respect what you all say, and it does weigh on my mind. Most of the calls that I've gotten have been in opposition to it. I've only had one person reach out to me who was in favor of it. So I, you know, I, I've listened to what the people have to say, but I've also listened to what the attorney has had to say. And so that's, you know, I don't want to put the, the people in a position of wasting their money by ending up in federal court, having punitive damages and attorney's fees lavened against us, and the same result happened anyway. So that's the basis of the voting is.
Sidney, I agree with you, you know, with, I, the problem is that the general public doesn't realize the circumstance that we're under here and, and what we've got to do to keep from getting sued. So. With that being said, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Say true.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. Now, new business, board appointments. And I'm sorry, do you all, did you all want to follow up with anything? I didn't give you the chance, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You're welcome.
Hope it works out.
Do our best.
For sure.
Thank you.
It was never our intention to come to this town this way. We're only here to be helpful. We want to treat the community. We want to do our best, and that's our goal.
And, and you know, we understand that too. And I think you all understand where some of us have to.
I know.
We're obligated, no matter how attorney stretches it or how, whatever angle you put it on, we're obligated by some, to some, so.
I understand that, and sometimes people's perception. I think the, the guy that educated the teenagers, I can't remember his name, but education is key. Once you're educated about what we do, you get a brand new perspective, and everyone is always open.
And it almost seems to me like that those could kind of go hand in hand, you know, you could work together.
We want to.
That's up to you.
We do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board appointments, lots of time, all of some youth. Mr. Chairman, I think we filled that last meeting with Brooks Chapel.
There's two of them.
I thought we, I thought you only wanted two. Probably six months ago, six or eight months ago. But then there was another one that's kind of in the interim, I believe. I may be wrong.
Not sure.
Some package. So we have this table list until we get it.
Was this, hold on, this, in just a minute. This was tabled last month, within minutes. This appointment was tabled last month.
The one that Brooks Chapel? Before we were on the phone with counsel.
Uh, you're right, maybe that did get picked up after a closed session, let me look. I think it was discussed during the time that there was one motion made after closed session. So if you want to make that motion now.
Yeah, I made the motion to, it was upon Brooks Chapel to the most final office of these. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got the Lee County Hospital Authority.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to that, when the hospital authority met on March 29th, at that time, they voted, for their purposes, they voted to reduce their board membership to seven members. And with one seat currently vacant due to the resignation of Tom Clark several months ago. And there's terms ending for three additional seats on April 30th, 2022. If the board concurs with shrinking that board to seven members, no new appointments or reappointments would be necessary at this time. But if you are in agreement with that, I think a vote concurring with that would be proper.
Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Poe, I know Patton doesn't want to be reappointed, and I'm not sure about the meeting. But I talked with Patton, and Patton told me that he thought that we ought to keep Dr. West over on there. Well, did they not mention in that meeting that, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought they said neither of the three wanted to stay on there?
I, I didn't get any follow-up from them, and in fact, I was meant to ask for that and slip my mind. I'm just going from the notes I took at the meeting, so that's, that's what I directed this on, so.
I'd suggest that we contact them. I mean, if they're, they run out April 30th, they're probably going to meet between now and then.
I don't think they plan another meeting till up in the summer, at the earliest.
I think that's, that pressing.
I'd contact their attorney and have him provide what they formally voted in.
I make a motion to table all the appointments. Okay, motion to table, I second that, all the paper.
Aye.
Okay, Ninth District Financing Committee.
Mr. Chairman, that's basically a tourism-related financing entity. And what we've done in the past years is have the staff member dealing with tourism to serve on that board. I think that would be proper.
Who is that?
Richard. Richard Johnson.
I make a motion upon Richard Johnson to the Ninth District Financing. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next on the list is the Packer Truck bids.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if we could back just a second, I've got a note here. A few months ago, several months ago, we all appointed a committee of four members to review the sick leave sharing policy and make recommendations back to the board. They had one or, I don't know if they had one or two meetings. But Sharon Lawson was a member of that committee, and with her passing, it's left a latency, and they requested that someone else be appointed to fill that slot or whatever the board chooses to do. You want the three remaining members to work through it and present a recommendation, or if you want to afford another member to take their place, either one.
So Sheriff, who else?
Uh, Major Woodard.
Okay.
And Gary Collinsworth and Kathy Wilder are the three other members.
Do you have time to deal with it, Jenny? You can say no. Not about time, is it, Jim? Personally, I think the committee of three is fine. Do you want somebody from your office on it?
It doesn't matter. If they have questions, they can ask us, you know, from Intuit or whatever, or Stack, and we can provide it, and they can make decisions.
Sounds good, mate.
I would advise them to proceed with three members then. Hard to interrupt.
That's okay, I'll for the Packer Truck bids.
Packer Truck bids, we received two bids. The bids, both are on Peterbilt truck with two different dealerships. Martin's Peterbilt, McLeone, Kentucky submitted a bid price of $298,223 for Peterbilt model 520 with a 40 cubic yard new weight mammoth front load packer unit. Peterbilt Knoxville submitted a bid price of $313,589 for the same model Peterbilt with a 40 yard easy pack front load packer unit. Uh, per bid specifications, delivery of the truck would be after July 1, 2023. So we would not have to budget for those in the upcoming budget, but in the following year. We have, after a review of bid specifications and the units that were submitted, Collinsworth determined that the low bid, Martin's Peterbilt, can be reduced even lower. He checked with them, they actually submitted a bid on a truck with a larger engine than what we had requested. And by reducing that to the other engine, we could reduce our cost by approximately $6,770, down to $291,446. And that, that's an engine that we have, three other trucks that we use in the county that works fine, has sufficient power to do everything that we need to do. So staff recommendation would be to award the bid to Martin's Peterbilt and London at the, with the only change being the different engine, which would lower the cost.
I make the motion to go with Martin's Peterbilt and London for the Packer Truck. At, what did you say that?
Two.
Was it reduced?
$291,446.
$29, $291,446. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, Grapple Truck bid.
Only Grapple? Jason?
I make the motion to reject the Grapple Truck bid.
All right. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And to rebid?
Yes. Okay. Okay, next we got the MLC Walk-Along Sponsorship Request. Make a motion that we approve the $5,000 that we have been doing with the Mount LePire Overpasses Walk-Along bid. Got a motion, got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Local law enforcement, law enforcement.
This is the third of these that we've processed over the last few months. As I've told you a couple times, this got backlogged due to lawsuits between several states and the feds. But this one is the county's eligible to receive this, the sheriff's office, $1,476, no local match required. This will be the final one of, of the three-year catch-up period. And the sheriff's office, again, typically uses these for crime prevention and education purposes by distributing materials to students in elementary schools in the county.
Make a motion to accept.
Second. All opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, PSA Request for Water Project Funding.
Got a letter there from the PSA advising, they submitted, I think, five or six projects initially for the board to consider, and you asked that, as they received current bids, to advise of what the situation was. On the Giles Hall project, after rebidging that project and obtaining a little bit of additional funding, they do not have a shortfall for that project. They have enough sufficient funding to cover that project with the current bid. Excuse me, the Fields Waterline Replacement Project Phase Two. They had four bidders, a low bid for Boyd's Construction and Excavation. With that low bid, they are still short on the project by $141,267.95. The other funding is coming through Llano Wisco and the Appalachian Regional Commission. And they are requesting that the board consider providing that gap funding of $141,000 plus from the American Rescue Plan Act funds.
We have a list of, I think, six projects.
Yes. They've got more coming up in, I think the next bid is either Tubelight or August that they're expecting to have. The other bids were Blackwater, St. Charles.
Maple Hill?
Maybe, can't remember. One other, but I can't remember what the other one was. But they're just sort of taking them as they come to them. I think I've got that list somewhere close to my computer, but I'm not sure how far I'll have to dig to find it.
You know, I think I was the one at the beginning that brought up the idea of trying to help them with some projects, but my intention, what they gave this list on last time, I believe it was people that don't have water at all. And now we're talking about, as I understand it, skipping over those people and doing a replacement project for people who already have it. I understand everything has to be replaced at some point, or you end up not having it too. But I think all those on that list were places that didn't have any public water.
Uh, both of these projects were on that list.
The, the Fields was on the list?
Yes, the Fields and Giles Hall are the low company original bids. They're just providing feedback as the schedule of bidding comes due. And these just happened to be First Street Barages that went, went out to bid.
What's the, so you don't know the shortfall on Blackwater, for example?
They won't know until they actually do the bids. Pricing is, pricing is coming down, and that's a good thing.
Where you been shopping at? I need to go there.
Well, on, on these projects, on water line construction projects, I'll put it that way. Mr. Chairman, I make that motion for the, what was the name, $141,000? Yes, $141,267.95. For that field line, water line, and Fields, because it's hard to put a price on clean water. Clean drinking water.
I second that motion. Okay, you got a motion, that's second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I think we had already pretty much. Okay, next we got the American Recovery Act Funding Request.
Mr. Chairman, we had two requests there, and I've got a couple more as well. And I've received, sent some of the board packet. But the two in your packet, the first is from the Lee County Department of Social Services. They're requesting funding to install automatic door openers at their main entrance. The price they have is, is from the same company that did our front door. Price they have is $5,720, and they're asking if it would be possible to fund this through the county's ARCA funds. The second request is from Chestnut Grove Assistant Bidding. It's just in a letter form stating some of the needs, but no specific amount. Also, in addition to those, I've got one right, even one, that I'll just have to give to you. This is from the Town of Pennington. Basically, they're proposing to start a Parks and Recreation Department in the town, and which they're saying would also provide funding, or provide opportunities for recreation for county residents as well as town residents. And they are requesting the county provide financial support for hiring a Parks and Rec Director for the town in the amount of $20,000.
Is that a one-time thing there?
I just got this Friday.
Now, I talked, I, I did, I spoke with Keith on this, and my understanding is it, it's not just going to be a Pennington Gap thing. You know, it may be to, you know, maybe something could be helped to, you know, locate in Rosie or Blackwater or somewhere like that, it's not, just a Pennington Gap thing. Because I brought that up about, you know, trying to help out throughout town counties.
And in addition to that one. And in addition to that one, the sheriff's office has advised, as you know, we have laptops in the cruisers, in the patrol officers' vehicles. Five of those units need to be replaced. I don't have pricing on them. They just brought this up the other day. For those road type laptops, I'm going to estimate, and see if I get agreement up here, probably between fifteen hundred and two thousand for a unit like that. Pardon?
This one cost fifteen.
That one cost fifteen? Well, it'd be a minimum probably of two thousand for each one of those. And they are also requesting one additional radio unit. So that, you're probably talking about fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. I don't know what a new radio rig would cost right now, so.
Do you get that information, get it to us on the third?
Yeah, we can, we can push and get some specs on the computers.
And has Rex looked at whatever the issue is with the computers?
I think he's the one advised they needed to.
Okay. So you're thinking that the, that this is over your threshold because there's so many units, or that's?
Yeah.
Are you talking about procurement or just buying something?
Well, no, just talking about specifying mine. It's not about the procurement. And the request is for this to be paid from the ARCA funds.
Got you.
Was the total on that one that we started out on there, was the total on that bid seven twenty, is that a total for all there?
Yeah, that was their request, fifty-seven hundred and twenty dollars.
Parking and social services?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the five thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars for the automatic door openers at Social Services. Okay, you got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Call of favor?
Aye.
Any vote?
Second.
What about the, did everybody, did you make that one? Keith sent out? What did you think of that?
What did?
We all think of the one Keith sent out.
I appreciate everything that Town of Pennington is trying to do for the county. You know, there's been a lot of stuff on social media lately, just people talking about what a good job Big Stone's doing. And I think that's part of what spurred them to try to get some things going. And I talked to Keith about his request, and he's talking about travel ball and doing more at Leaven Field. And, you know, he made the point that Lee Theater, for example, is something that people didn't think would go very far, but people from all over the county use it, and it helps the county as a whole. I don't think that we're willing to step up and pay for a full-time Parks and Rec person. And if they're willing to do that, we can split the costs on them, and they have to manage the people. I think it's a good thing. I think the amount's a little rich, but in the grand scheme of things, I mean, I think Town of Pennington does a good job with a lot of the things they do with the block parks, with theater, Leaven Field, the Tobacco Festival, and all those things benefit the county, and we don't, we don't have to pay for it.
Sounds like the technician for the new cell system is going to make a return visit.
I see it.
So roll heads, you say? You want to turn it off?
No, I muted you.
Why wouldn't I?
When I figure out what the issue is, we'll have to get back over here.
That didn't sound nice, though. Okay. I'm in agreement of it. I make a motion to approve the request on Town Pennington for twenty. Call of favor?
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear it.
Well, I wouldn't make any noise because I got muted.
I'm muted now. You're good.
Okay, you're back to. That's all those, right? All the requests?
Uh, well, we had the one from Chestnut Grove with no amount.
Yeah, motion table. Okay, you got a motion table, got a second?
Second.
Call of favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay, now, move on to staff resignation.
We've had, since the March board meeting, received notices of resignation from having the memo two to now three, as of yesterday, staff members. Leader of Control Coordinator submitted verbal notice on March twenty-third, her last workday was April fifth. The, one of the Works Program co-coordinators submitted his letter of resignation on March twenty-fifth, and his last day of work was April eighth. We received a notice from one of the transfer station employees yesterday, and his last day at work will be April twenty-ninth. We've already advertised for the Leader of Control and Works Program. I have copies of those applications with me tonight, as well as the Administrative Assistant Position, which is open. I'll provide copies to all of you on those before you leave, so please do not leave without getting a packet. And we will advertise transfer station position next week. We'll get it started, so.
Okay, next the jet fuel tank installation proposal.
I make a motion that we reject the proposal, the single proposal we received.
I'll second that. Got a motion and a second to reject the single proposal we got?
And rebid.
And rebid. And rebid.
Thank you.
Call of favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we got the Tourism Bylaws Amendment.
This originated with the Tourism Committee itself. Just have a note there from Mr. Johnson on that. They are voting unanimously to strike the section of the committee bylaws that compensate them fifty dollars a month. They feel that the desire to serve on that committee and promote tourism should be something that comes from the individual and not want compensation for it. So for it to be official, it takes an incurring vote from the board's executive.
You know, I appreciate them wanting to do it, but I appreciate the kind of people we've got on there, that they're doing a better job than has been done in several years. We've got some really qualified people. I think really why they're wanting to do this is because they're calling to ask us for some money. It's bogus, but they want to be able to say we gave up fifty dollars a month. And, and I think they can have both. From my perspective, I don't care to give them money now that they're active and trying to make some headway. I don't mind paying them fifty dollars a month and giving them a little bit of budget. That's just me.
We've budgeted money to the committee in the past, not a lot of money, but.
I think they're one of the more.
Okay. Well, I was a little concerned. All other boards, most other boards receive a fifty-dollar payment from meetings. Individual members can decline that if they so choose, and we've had some who did. But yet the provision is there, especially when you're looking at meetings that are held here in Johnsville. Someone who lives in Johnsville, it's not that big a deal to come to the meeting. If someone lives in two miles from Coming Out or that seminary, they've got quite a bit of driving time and distance, gas involved in coming to meetings. So that's, that's the issue that I see in that, but still, it can always be changed back later.
Okay, so. Make a motion to accept or deny?
Accept.
Would be to concur.
Concur.
I wouldn't make the motion to concur. I'd rather pay them. I appreciate what they're doing. I'm giving my measly fifty dollars back.
Again, they can decline a payment, and we've had that happen before. With the airport authority at one time, we had one member who took the payment, but then signed the check back over to the authority.
How many do you say was on the board name?
About five.
They meet monthly.
I don't know what, if they've established a regular meeting. They just try to get reorganized and re-energized.
Charlie's only, wouldn't Hunter make better of them?
Yeah, pretty much. Well, we could always, I'll tell you. That's what they're after. They voted on, so I'm sure that's what they're after. So you make that motion to concur?
Make a motion.
Second. Call of favor?
Aye.
Any vote?
Aye.
So, two opposed?
Two hosed.
Okay.
I don't think one of them counts. He's on that board. Okay, next we got reports of recommendations from the county administration.
I don't have any other recommendations.
Reports of recommendations from the county administrator.
I just got a couple. Again, these were late, this one, it's dated, April thirteenth, but I didn't get it until Thursday. It's a, it's a letter from Kielaski County, excuse me, with county, with county. With the creation of the legislation that allows a casino in Bristol, with that, the General Assembly created a Regional Improvement Commission. And the membership of the Regional Improvement Commission is all of the localities in the Bristol Transportation District. The commission was formed, you can read it, it's attached on the second page there. It consists of one member appointed by the local governing body of each jurisdiction composing the transportation district. That includes the eligible host city, which is Bristol District. They're established to receive funds from the gaming commission, or from the proceeds that are approved in other legislation that was adopted with the Regional Improvement Commission. I didn't bring a copy of that with me, but anyway, this was done in twenty twenty, and yet the commission has never yet been, been formed. They are to receive and disperse the gaming tax proceeds from the Bristol Casino. The commission needs to form, to meet, to set bylaws and set their policies. The casino intends to open temporary, temporary facility on July eighth, and so the commission needs to be ready to at least begin to start that process when they open. They do not expect to see any real impact from that until probably fiscal year twenty twenty-four, but they feel like that we need to go ahead and get the commission started. They are asking that you appoint a member in time to meet, have a first meeting of this group on May nineteenth, which will follow two days after your May meeting. Sorry I couldn't get this to you soon, like I said, just got it. Thank, well, I said Thursday, but I believe it came in on Friday. So they are asking that someone be appointed to that. With County has already appointed their Assistant County Administrator to this. And they're asking that this board appoint someone to serve for Lee County.
I guess it's a safety question, but what happens if we don't put anybody on there to, I mean, I generally hate these kind of regional commissions because I think you lose control. It's just like the regional jail authority. We completely lost control of what we really want, and I just don't like this general rule. So with this, if we're not a part of this committee or commission, do we have more say-so than our dollars?
I mean, I don't know. This is the first time I'm seeing it.
I think they'll be, this commission will be dispersing your dollars.
I think that's where we go.
And if you don't have a voice at the table, you'll have no representation there.
We know that, or is that just based on their letter?
Based on reading the other legislation. I think that's the case. Have it read thoroughly.
Well, I hadn't seen this until now, but my understanding of what I have heard is just what they've said, that it goes to this commission for dispersion of them.
But we're having two meetings before then, right?
No. Well, you would have one May third.
And then another.
Yes, the seventeenth. You'd have one on the seventeenth. So if you want to wait, that's fine.
I mean, if we have to, we have to, but I'd like Stacy to be able to look at it beforehand and make sure we have to.
I mean, I think just as a practical rule, be foolish not to have somebody on it. I mean, you don't want to be, you don't want to have, you know, you don't want to be lacking in knowing what's going on, first of all. I mean, I think that, I think you want to have somebody sitting there.
They have to pay you stupid money.
I mean, it's, when it's money, you want your part.
Oh, I agree with that.
But if we don't have a representative on there, then we're not going to get any money?
You don't have somebody sitting there charging for their part.
I'd like to see old Nate can do that. Hope he can do that. Ain't nobody gonna have her out for no money. What about Nate doing it? Is this something we need to vote on for that?
Again, you'll have a recess meeting, and the next board meeting will be on the seventeenth, and this meeting's scheduled for the nineteenth, so.
Okay.
Y'all are at the table, make sure we're right about.
Yeah, that's fine.
Make a motion table.
Second.
Call of favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Yeah, I think that's right. I think it is. We just look at it. You got anything else, Dan?
That's it.
Okay, reports of recommendations from the board?
I do have one that I wrote down, just for information, I'm sorry. Congress Transportation Board will conduct their public meeting on the Six Year Improvement Plan for primary highways. This will be on May eleventh at four o'clock at the Southwest Virginia Highway Center in Addison. There will be a public call-in period during that meeting.
You got any votes?
Two or three things. One, if the town wants to do so, Town of Pennington, I'd like for them to be able to use our excavator and push all the attachment or whatever it is along Main Street in Pennington to clear that right-of-way, railroad right-of-way, contingent upon them getting permission for the railroad to do so. That'd be front of on Main Street, and I can't think of the other street where IGA is that runs parallel to Main Street.
North Main and North Johnson.
North Johnson. And I talked to Keith Harles about that. He said they would do that if we would let them use it.
Is that using our operator?
No. I mean, they didn't ask for an operator.
I mean, I was just saying, you know, those are dumb, you know, we're, you might, you might not have anybody that can run one. And I wouldn't have a problem with that if we, you know, we need to look to be.
I would, if they need to.
I would rather, matter of fact, I would rather our operators that normally operate them, if they're going to use them. I would rather, matter of fact, I would rather our operators that normally operate them, if they're gonna use them.
I'd be comfortable.
What do you get?
Yeah, I agree.
Like, don't they quit?
How much time?
I would think it would be bad.
Good man.
So, I'll, I'll make that in form of a motion to allow them to use that and, and an operator if they need one. Or do you want to make a contingent upon them only using our operator?
It doesn't matter, but either way, I like using our operator, cause they're used to the equipment. But if they can't, you know, they might not be available, so I'd make it like that, they might be able to.
I'd make a motion to allow them to use that per, just contingent upon them getting approval from the railroad and to, for us to give them an operator if they need one.
Is this gonna be clearing CSX right-of-way?
Correct.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
How, how, how far is it?
Okay, got a motion, I'll second that, all in favor?
Uh.
Any vote?
I had a conversation with Jill Carson probably a year ago, I would say now, about having a joint meeting with the town. Uh, I told her I thought it was a good idea that if she would get approved by her board first, I would try to with mine. So, in, in conversation with Keith Harless the other day, I said I was still waiting on that. He said, well, we've worked that a long time together. So, I said, well, nobody told me, so I guess now it's, it's our, our turn, if y'all are interested. I think they're doing good things, I stayed early, Town of Pennington really tries to do a good job. I think they're doing an excellent job in town, I think Keith in particular did a great job. And, uh, I, I, I think we should meet with them, and I think we should meet with Town Jones with their will to, uh, people expect more than what we're giving them in, in towns. Uh, beautification issues, uh, renovating buildings, giving things facelift, um, I think there's a lot we can do working together, um, so what do y'all think about having a joint meeting with Town of Pennington?
Good.
Good. So, I like that motion that Mr. Poe and Mr. Harless coordinate the meeting.
Hall of favor, or a second to that? Hall of favor?
Uh.
Court Services Unit, I was down there probably three weeks ago, their door lock isn't working. They said since they've had renovations, it's never worked, so you walk in the lobby and then just go straight back to there.
We had contacted the contractor on that, on those locks, let me, let me make, let me make contact with them tomorrow and see if we can get that correct. We could just, we could just buy one, but it'd be different types keys, but let me see what they can do first. And if not, we'll just buy another lock and be good with it. Locks are one of those things that quality's not as good as they used to be.
Lead childcare, we had talked a while back, I believe, about, uh, I think Mr. Mosley brought up the, uh, the need for childcare and kinda shaking that real estate loose. And I mentioned that they didn't pay property taxes, but if they, if they were put in a position to have to pay property taxes, maybe it could get sold as a judicial sale for back taxes. And I think, uh, Chris was gonna look into the idea of whether or not they should be paying taxes since their five oh one six three's to fund. Can you follow up with him, Dane, before our next meeting and see where he is on that?
Yeah, I'll check with him.
And that's all I had.
Y'all ready, huh?
I'm, I'd just like to make a comment about, uh, old school, school board offices up here, a lot of people's upset. We, the county tore those buildings down, but they evidently had not been in them and seen the condition they were in. Uh, if they were worth salvaging, first of all, the school board would still have been there. Uh, but I've been in there, Sidney's been in there, I think about everybody on this board has. The roof's falling in, the outside walls are falling in, and, uh, they're, you know, it, it'd take four, five million dollars to salvage, or that building.
Or more.
Yeah. Uh, it, it was really, really in bad shape. I was amazed when I went in there.
I was gonna mention that, that's one thing I forgot, that the ninety percent of bringing the building down is complete. That back add-on section is the only thing that's not been brought down. Uh, we worked on it a week, we had, we had pulled off of it because mowing and a lot of other stuff hit, but they at least got most of that down. Uh, pulled a few items out of there, uh, some steel and stuff that, that they could salvage. But, uh, there's a lot of separation to be done over there before we can get everything out and, and moved. Uh, that'll, that'll take some time, uh, but at least basic part is down, they've got the, the area blocked off and roped off, but as they have time, they'll get back over there to do that and start sorting it out and cleaning it up. One of the things we discussed, we've had some people calling, and I think some board members may have heard from people, but we've had some calls about people wanting a brick out of it. And rather than, we just hope people do not go over there and get in that mess, because there's all kinds of debris and stuff there. Uh, actually, when he took this upper side wall, when he, when he started taking the roof there, when the roof came down, the floor seals on the outside actually gave way and went right on through to the basement. So, that's the condition of some of the, the framing. Uh, but I told him, we'll, when he gets into it, picks some brick that is fairly decent, stuff that's not broke up, and we'll segregate it out over at the transfer station somewhere, make a pile up somewhere, and if people wanna come in and get a brick, they can do that.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Got anything, Joe?
No.
I just have one thing, Dane, about following up on that convenience side over there.
I've, I've got the information, I'll get a letter to her and, and see what I can come up with.
Okay. Oh, I got it.
One other thing, Dane, with, uh, can we use some little work for people over there to help separate that material?
He'll separate it with the excavator.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'm good.
He said, he tries to separate as he brings it down, but then when a whole wall falls, he just deal with it. And, uh, but he'll, he'll pick through it and try to separate as much as he can. Some, some of the bricks and stuff will end up going in the trash, but we'll, we'll keep most, we'll keep as much of the concrete and brick and stuff out as we can, because we can dump it over there and deal with it, so.
Okay. I'm good.
Guess that's it, then?
Motion to recess till May the third at five o'clock.
Second to that, all in favor?
Uh.
Any vote?